So I'm going to start with counselors first. And you guys can introduce yourself one by one, and then we'll have members of the commute. We'll go with members of representing the city that are here on the call. And then from our counselors, I'll kick it over to members of the committee, Marcus Williams, and also standing in also as a member of the committee, President Justin Hurst.
Hi, everybody. I'm Tracy Whitfield, Springfield City Councilor at Large.
Hi, I'm Caterie Walsh, Springfield City Councilor at Large.
Hi, this is Jesse Letterman, Springfield City Councilor at Large.
Hi, this is Tim Allen. I'm Springfield City Councilor, representing Ward Seven.
Orlando Ramos, Ward Eight.
All right, I believe you have, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Counselor Mallow Brown, Ward Four.
Any other counselors want to introduce themselves before I move on with individuals that are here from the city and also then from their members of the public?
Counselor Justin Hurst, Springfield City Councilor.
Welcome. I know we have a member of the committee also, Marcus Williams. He is also joining us. Counselor Williams, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, so I can hear you now. All right, welcome. So we have, we have on the call while we're waiting for the solicitor, we have Commissioner of Economic Development, Tim Sheehan, if you want to introduce yourself, sir.
Tim Sheehan, Chief Development Officer, City of Springfield.
My pleasure, welcome. And then members of the public, if you want to introduce yourself, you can do that now. One at a time, I know that's on virtual Zoom, we have a, just let it, I'll say your name, and then you can introduce yourself and just your title and where you, and that's it. So I'm going to start with Michael Steve.
Hi, my name's Michael Steve, and I'm with Eastfield Mall. Thanks for having us.
Okay, and then I have Brian Shea.
Brian Shea, I am the attorney representing Old Post Road Development Corporation. Good evening.
Okay, Mr. Chris Meacham.
Hey, Ian, I'm Chris Meacham, CEO of DM Cannabis. Thanks for having me.
Okay, I have Mr. Chuck Breidenbach.
Yes, thank you, Adam. I'm also with Eastfield Mall.
All right, pleasure. I have Alina or Elena Jimenez.
Good evening, Elena Jimenez here, Vice President and co-partner of Six Bricks.
Okay, fantastic. We have John De La Novella.
Hi, I'm John De Novella, General Manager for DM Cannabis.
We also have, I believe, Mr. Paul Remish. And then Mr. Vincent Santinello. And we have Taylor Schubrick. Did I say that right?
Yep, that was perfect. Hi, everybody. I'm Taylor Schubrick. I'm with Six Bricks.
Okay, welcome, welcome. We are still waiting for our city solicitor to sign on. I don't know if he's in the back room or something. He just said he was going to sign on. So, all right, moving forward, I'm going to open this meeting. My name is Adam Gomez. I'm the Chairman for Economic Development for the Subcommittee for the City of Springfield. Today's agenda item is marijuana cultivation. The title of it is, so we, so we can start talking about a little bit of what marijuana cultivation is. If, you know, members of, I wanted the city solicitor here because we had a couple of questions for him. And basically, the questions were about where is the city when it comes, where are we at when it comes to opening up round two, when it comes to the marijuana, not marijuana, just cultivation, but marijuana recreational licenses? I know that we, about a year ago or less, we have went through a couple of processes of four different organizations that were given their marijuana licenses, but now knowingly that we are in this pandemic, the interest of myself and some of our colleagues on the city council has been knowingly that we have a downward spiral of, you know, budgeting and shortfalls specific to casino revenue. I don't know if maybe we can open up the discussion a little bit with Tim and talking about if he knows anything in particular, anything that we're not aware of, on how we can work collaboratively or with the administration. Because I know the administration has been doing some great work behind, you know, these first two applicants that came before the council. But now where we're at is trying to figure out if round two is ever gonna, gonna happen, or when it's gonna happen, or if there's a holdup. And I'm not trying to put you on the, on the spot, Commissioner, I just, you're the only one that I could talk to at the moment. So I just wanted to say, welcome you. Thank you for joining us. And seeing if there was any, anything that you can add a little bit to that before colleagues and open up questions to the colleagues.
I don't have any specific information for you, but again, Eddie's been actually advancing this, and my understanding is that there's a willingness to advance into the round, but for cultivation, but I don't have any specifics as to timing of that.
Interesting. So at the moment, I guess we still have to wait a little bit. I know that there's a gentleman here that I had invited that he has some kind of expertise behind cultivation, at least that we can wait for the solicitor, somebody to come in so we can kind of figure out where, what direction we're going into in this conversation. I want to kind of maybe let him speak about his expertise kind of in cultivation. I know that it's very lucrative, it's a bigger, so the folks at home that are listening, cultivation is what a bigger kind of, it's like a factory, it's bigger than just recreational sites, am I right, Mr. Sheehan? So it's more, hold on, I think we have somebody joining us now. Apologize. Hold on for a second, please. Hello?
Hello?
All right, Mr. We actually.
I have a problem with my Zoom, so I called in.
No problem, no problem. We appreciate you joining us. Actually, we were in, into the question of asking, you know, we were waiting for you to join us. So our question, my first question is specific to the process on marijuana cultivation. Where are we, city solicitor, on maybe looking into opening round two? And what's the timeframe look like with, with round two when it comes to the marijuana industry in Springfield?
Yeah, so I can give you an update. We had a meeting, it was just last week. Was myself, City Clerk Tashina Davis, and Julie Steiner. And we went over sort of the to-do list to get there. And what we discussed was having an RFP that.
On Montgomery Road in Westfield.
Hello?
Excuse me, can everybody please mute your, your volumes, please? So then we can be respectful of everyone that wants to speak. And if you want to speak, just housekeeping rules, can you please raise your hand in the queue? And I will get to all of your questions promptly. So I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Kukula, you may, you may, you may commence.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. So we went over a to-do list to get the, she said, the second round of RFPs. And what we had discussed was probably three aspects coming out. One, picking up on the retail aspects of a marijuana establishment similar to like we had the four in the first round. Two, being a cultivation-only aspect. And, and we talked about a third being a delivery, to see if there are people interested in opening a marijuana delivery business in Springfield. And so we thought that those could be combined, or that they could be done separately. But we noted that what we had done last time would pretty much follow what we need to do for the retail marijuana establishment. The cultivation, we thought would be a little bit different. And then the delivery would be, is a new license, so we'd have to build on that. The Cannabis Control Commission is currently in the process of coming out with new regulations. I notified the council, I sent an email, they're having a public hearing on the new regs, August 3rd. And so I sent out the links for that, if you're interested in participating. And there's also a link there to the proposed or draft regulations. We thought that in our meeting, what we discussed is that the best timetable would consider when those regulations are finalized. And we would anticipate that those will be finalized in September. And so thereafter, we could put out the process. So I have let the mayor know where we're at, and so he, it's really going to be up to him whether he wants to do it in, you know, coinciding with the regulations being issued or after, once the regulations are out. I can tell you, he did express to me, you know, his concerns as to, he'd like to see one of these businesses open so that we can get some sense of how it is going to go in Springfield. And there's currently four that we're waiting to open. There's the, of course, the Insa one is in the process of constructing, reconstructing the building. The Boston Road is also there, and Six Bricks is the third. And those three have all been issued their provisional licenses, my understanding, for, by the CCC. So we've got to be getting close to them opening. I don't have an update for you on the Page Boulevard location. I'm not sure where that one's at. But I have had contact and communications with the other three and have kept up to what the Cannabis Control Commission is doing. So, so we're getting close. But, so my best estimate is in September, we'll be ready to issue an RFP. And, you know, the mayor, I think his timeline is going to hopefully coincide not too far from that, but as I said, it's his call and he needs to make a determination. And he's very interested in seeing, how are these gonna go when they're open? And for all purposes, I can tell they're, they're going well elsewhere. There has been a lot of people calling, and so that there is interest in the, in another round. But it is a tough market. The, this, the, the situation that we're in, I understand that the market's gotten more competitive. And of course, the COVID had slowed things down. But that's, that's sort of a brief update where, where we're at in terms of the planning. And as I said, it has ongoing.
Okay, no problem. Thank you, Mr. Kukula. Thank you, city solicitor. My question now, from hearing your update, is do you believe that when you release this RFP, that maybe the RFPs could be separate? And what I mean by separate is, what I mean by separate is basically, one for cultivation, RFP, and then RFP for the delivery. What was the third one that you were talking about? I apologize.
Just a retail establishment.
Another retail establishment. So, no, it's just, I'm just interested in understanding, because I know the last time, the last round, what inevitably happened was that, I know that people that responded to the RFP or companies, some of them were, I guess, cultivations centers, from what I understand. And some of them were under the impression that the RFP was for every, for all uses of recreation. And inevitably, I don't know if there's any, any truth to that, but because you guys were just entertaining the recreational sites only, that some of those cultivation sites were kind of put to the side to wait it out or something. So I didn't know if you had a response a little bit about that.
I don't know. I was not on the review committee. I did not review the application, so I couldn't tell you.
No problem. So I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna badger you anymore. I know that there's some hands up in the queue. Firsthand in the queue is Counselor, Member of the Committee, Marcus Williams. And then from there, we're gonna go to Counselor Brown, and then to Counselor Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for calling, I think, what many would consider a meeting that should have taken place probably some time ago, you know. There, my main concern has been one that you've already alluded to. And that is the fact that after the recreational round went out, many of us might have believed that, you know, there would be soon thereafter another round that specifically considered cultivation. And, you know, as an elected official that, from the very first day, being kind of interested and knowing kind of the, that we were on the cusp of having recreational marijuana facilities within our own city, took, took a deeper look into cultivation. And cultivation, for me, was the kind of over-brainer answer as it relates to how much tax, you know, how much it can add to the tax base for any one city. And the fact that, you know, and when you look at that specific number, it takes several recreational facilities to add up to that very, that very thing. So, you know, I've been saying it throughout the years, that cultivation honestly should precede recreational marijuana facilities because those places need an entity, a supplier for their sales, their sales, you know, intentionally. So it really made sense, and I thought, again, it didn't happen that way, that cultivation, first and foremost, should be kind of what the, the state had its eye on. Now, I respect, you know, certainly what city solicitor Kukula said in regards to where we are, and, you know, I want to give some context to my comments currently, you know. I met with the mayor perhaps two months ago on cultivation, and asked the same questions that we were asking today. It was communicated to myself that, and, you know, certainly one where, you know, it's a conversation that I took a lot of optimism out of, where the mayor said that because of COVID, it had delayed some of the discussions around cultivation, or the next round, I should say. And now it's time for the conversation to pick back up. And that time, during that discussion, it was also asked, I had this conversation with Tom Ash at the table as well as Daryl Moss, that, you know, if this RFP process was to be similar to the first, and there was to be a committee where, you know, the city council will receive a certain number of appointments, then it made sense that I expressed my interest in joining that committee. And we all know that Counselor Whitfield was on that committee for the first round for recreation. And to my surprise, and disbelief, honestly, Mayor Sarno said, I, it doesn't not matter to me who serves on that to be the both of you or either of you. So I took that as, wow, the next round is going to be beginning soon, and we can start this conversation back up. So we are in the midst of that conversation, as well as where the city is as, as it relates to round two. So I took it upon myself this, this morning, after seeing the Solicitor Kukula's email about the public hearing on Monday, to call the Cannabis Commission myself. And I spoke to the Director for Government Affairs, David Lakeman, around a specific question. And that question was, would, do you foresee any of the proposed changes that are going to be taking place? Do you see that having any impact on, you know, people seeking licenses, cities going out to bid for cultivation or what have you? And he said very solidly that, no, it doesn't. It actually really pertains to a medical program that the state will be involved with, as well as the delivery service that Counselor or someone had alluded to earlier. But that should certainly delay the city or any municipality in the state for seeking to have additional dispensaries or centers for cultivation within the bounds of their city. So I took that as very reassuring news that there, the holdup, well, there should be no holdup. And the city should certainly seek to be looking for cultivation, especially to be, again, something that's existing within, within the city. And to Counselor Kukula's point, you know, if, if cultivation is going to be in a standalone application that precedes the rest, then I vote for that. I certainly vote for that. I vote for that because the time was six months ago. And I think this is a real opportunity for the city that has honestly seemed to be a little bit more divisive in nature to get its act together. We do not, we cannot afford an economic kind of, kind of just leaving this on the table in regards to its economic its economic quality, and that's, I mean, I'm sure we'll hear from those who are representing Boston Road. But I want to be clear that they might be on the line right now, but if a process is to ensue, then can we just start the process that will select the most viable candidate as it relates to getting jobs for those who have been disproportionately impacted by people being pulled over and arrested for marijuana sales in the state? Can we talk about that, racial equity? Which I thought was certainly a tenant as the rollout of recreational happening in the state. Can we talk about that? Can we talk about two to 300 jobs potentially that cultivation would provide? Again, tripling, if not probably quadrupling or more, the number of retail jobs that would be created individually as, you know, we have voted on those three or four to pass. Can we also talk about, you know, and again, I really want to work with the mayor on this. I think this is a prime opportunity, personalities aside, to get our acts together. And I really think that this is an opportunity, he really always mentions, you know, reappeating, reappeating, or excuse me, repeating offenders, as well as those who need access to jobs, who can't historically get them because of their records. This is another opportunity to allow them and afford them the opportunity to do so. We can't wait. We can't wait any longer. We can't wait any longer for that opportunity to pass, if it is to pass. So again, my, my main concern is, is that we are at a standstill. And being at that standstill and stalemate will allow municipalities like Chickapie, Westfield to take up cultivation, and Springfield's gonna lose out. If the relationships have already been built by recreational dispensaries in the city with those outside of it, then what good is a cultivation center in the city of Springfield? We need to act now. So that, that's my main point. And I think more than, you know, if we want to be sentimental for a second, I think the city really needs a healing. I think we are on the cusp of one of social unrest, racial unrest. And Springfield should be a leader, and especially the western part of the city as it relates to cultivation. We are a little bit behind the ball already, but it's not too late to get it right. And back to the process, the process just needs to be open for the opportunity. So with that being said, I have some specific questions for, you know, the petitioners or Eastfield Mall, whoever's on the call today. Because they are the agenda item, but I will yield if another counselor wants to speak.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Marcus Williams. If anybody has a question for the solicitor, what we have in the queue right now, we have Counselor Brown is next. Counselor Brown, you may, you may speak. And then after that, we have Counselor Orlando Ramos from Ward Six, and also Counselor Chasey Whitfield right after. And I just want to be, in the interest of time, we are half past. I know we started a little bit late. So we're gonna go a little bit quarter past six, to make sure we get a full hour into conversing and making sure that we ask all our questions. Counselor Brown.
Yes, first I want to commend you, Mr. Chair, and bringing this meeting together. And trying to get me up to speed, and the rest of my colleagues trying to get me up to speed, me being a new counselor. So I also, I do want to commend you guys, and thank you, guys. But there are certain things, you know, I, I just have certain questions that I just don't understand. And with, when it comes to the host agreement for cultivation for the city of Springfield, will it all be the same? Is there something that will be different?
And that's a question for our city solicitor.
Yes, Ed.
The host agreement provisions under the general laws are pretty narrow. When, the first time we did a host agreement, it was with Insa's Medical Marijuana Facility up on Cottage Street.
Yeah.
The, the, the host agreements we did currently, you know, look much different.
Yeah, I'm saying for this, they're pretty gonna be general, is what I'm asking. They're gonna pretty much be the same, right?
Right. There's, there's basically a 3% tax and a 3% impact fee, but the impact fee can only be our expenses.
Okay, so.
Those are the two sort of main areas, and those really won't differ.
Okay, so what I want to know from you also, Ed, is I, I, you know, I love the administration, I love the way, I love my city council, I love my city of Springfield. I love the way that we even trying to think of this in the business sense and helping our constituents. I just want to know, you know, how can we help you guys? What can we do to make this, I mean, can we, I commend my colleagues, Counselor Whitfield. I know Counselor Williams, there's certain counselors who've met, and our Chair Counselor Gomez, who's met with the mayor. What can we do to help? I mean, because we want to help. I want him to quarterback this. Let's get this stuff going. I think this is great. What can we do to help, to help him?
Well, you know, assuming the process looks like the last time, you know, there, there is a role for the council in the RFP process. It sounds like there's a, I wasn't involved in the, in the meetings that Counselor Williams talked a little bit. It sounds like there's some stuff to work out there. But, and then, of course, the council's role is the special permit. And, you know, the last time we, we had processed four host community agreements, three of the special permits went very smooth, the fourth that we had some litigation. And, and that was a big holdup because the mayor wanted to see how that was gonna turn out. He wasn't going to start another process till he knew what was gonna happen with that lawsuit.
And that's over, right? Is that over?
Yes, that is, it's all dead and gone, and, and as I said, you know, the, the. Yes, that is, it's all dead and gone and, and uh, as I said, you know, the, the uh, Insa is, is now uh, has received their provisional license, is doing their construction and, and uh, so. So that uh, should be well on its way. Um, I, for, for the council's role, uh, again, uh, the, the other thing that's going to be coming up is we need to revise our medical marijuana zoning aspects. The, the, the general laws have changed and our zoning violation with because medical is obligated.
Ed, I don't mean to cut you off, I apologize. I, I know disrespect. Uh, uh, that's not what I mean. I mean, is there a way maybe, I don't know, as soon as next week, you can kind of meet with a couple counselors or maybe, and we can get it going a little quicker? Like, what can we do? Can we do something where we can help you guys? We want to help you guys. I mean, what can we do? We want to meet.
So let me, let me.
Or whatever.
Let me, let me introduce that, let me introduce that real quick. Um, let me just get a point of order. So um, for the interest of uh, uh, of time, one, um, I would, I would like to know the answer to that question. But I would like to kind of uh, and it's not to cut off uh, the counselor or Mr. Bakula. Um, I think that we can um, ask that in a formal, you know, email, which all of us as counselors can sign on to. We had talked about something similar to that in uh, environmental and sustainability yesterday. Um, I think that we can ask a formal question or um, uh, to be involved with the process to start rolling this, 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 this out. I think Counselor Brown, you do have a, you know, a very uh, good point of wanting to, you know, get the ball rolling, just as a, a lot, a lot of us. And um, we really want to, you know, start getting this ball rolling and understanding when these RFPs are going to go right out.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, no problem, Mr. Brown, I appreciate your comments. Uh, I just want to get moving and get, uh, give a chance to other counselors to ask their questions. Um, Mr. Ramos, Counselor Ramos, you are next. And then after we have Counselor Whitfield, then Counselor Walsh, and everybody that has, anybody that has joined us after the council has asked questions. Please um, put your hand up in the queue and then I'll get back, I'll, I'll get to you as soon as possible. Counselor Ramos?
Chairman, thank you, Chairman. So I, I have, I have a questions for um, uh, Solicitor Bakula. Um, did I hear you right during your opening statements that it was your impression that the mayor first tell goes? Before we move on to opening up the next process, did I hear that correctly?
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you very good. You said, did, did you hear correctly that the mayor what?
Counselor Ramos, I think you have a, a connection issue because you are coming in a little slower. Um, when you come in, probably if you move to another part of the, your, wherever you are to get a little bit more service. We do, we do, we are hearing a little bit of a delay in your uh, response or your question.
Did I hear you correctly when you said that it was your impression? That the mayor wanted to wait until the first retail establishments opened before opening up the next phase?
I think that would be his preference, yes. I think he, he's really interested to see how much money will actually be generated. What types of uh, um, problems, if any, will we have once doors are actually open? Um, and I, I think that, you know, as we sit here now, um, we're talking about issuing more licenses. Uh, uh, or more special permits and, and host community agreements. But we haven't had the first one open yet and, and that's a sense of, you know, greater certainty around how those are going to work. Uh, before uh, we issue anymore. I, I think, I think that is one of the mayor's concerns, yes.
So I guess my concern is that we are talking about a different type of license and a different type of service. When we initially opened up the process for the first round, it was our hope, we sent a letter. Administration explaining that it was our hope that cultivation would be considered in that first round as well. Cultivation is completely different. We're talking about a separate, a, a different type of service. Which would essentially generate even more revenue than retail. And so my concern is that I, I think that we can walk and chew gum at the same time. We can do, we, we can approve a cultivation license while we're waiting for retail to open up. I don't think that there's any conflict there. So my, I, I, I would go by saying this, I encourage um, yourself and the mayor to consider taking up cultivation. In uh, the immediate, very immediate future, so that we can begin um, in the tax revenue. Uh, considering the fact that we keep being told that we're headed towards an inevitable uh, recession. I think now more than ever, we need to look at new ways to create revenue. And so I would encourage yourself, the mayor, and the administration to open up the next phase for cultivation. And I'll, I'll close with that, uh, Mr. Chairman, because I need to step out, I need to go, but. Um, just wanted to emphasize that and go on record saying that we need to do cultivation now. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Counselors, so much. Um, have a good day, enjoy the rest of your evening. Counselor Walsh, you're next, and then we have Counselor Whitfield.
Counselor Walsh is not next, I'm next.
She, she was, she was actually before you, ma'am, I promise you, and then you were, you, you're right after her.
Someone took my hand down and then I put it back up.
If, if, alright, so if, if you want, you may go.
I will, I will.
If you want, it's just for the interest.
I'll defer to her, but I just wanted to make you aware because I do have something to do.
No problem.
Uh, Counselor Whitfield was ahead of me, so.
Alright, I apologize if, if, if somebody put it down, I apologize. I don't know if it was me, but I was still fumbling through, this is the first time I'm using it, it's not, um.
Go ahead, Counselor Walsh, since you're ready, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, you know what I'm interested in? I'd like to hear from some of the uh, the business people, or if there's anybody on this Zoom call that is interested in uh, doing an RFP. I, I'd like to know whether or not um, COVID nineteen or the current economic situation has changed your plans? Or does, or is there now uh, more of a need for a timeline and something definitive from the city for you to stay? And keep your interest in Springfield?
So is that question directed to the solicitor or is it?
Well, no, no, that's the, that's the people who represent Eastfield Mall or other businesses that want to come here and apply for these licenses. Are they impacted by the current situation? Are they going to stick with Springfield? Are they going to move on?
Okay, how, can I um, can, can, can we hold on that question? Because I want to open the floor up to them after counselors. So I want to hold that question, we're going to put it into the parking lot and we're going to hear from Counselor um, Tracy Whitfield. And then from there, we'll open it up to the rest of the uh, colleagues after and we'll get to that question, we'll put that question in the parking lot. I apologize. It's, and it's a very good question. Uh, Counselor Whitfield, you are next.
It is a similar question that I was going to ask, so I'll pull my questions later, but I did want to clarify something about the RFP process. But I want Solicitor Bakula to clarify because he did have to, while he wasn't on the review committee and I was. I'm pretty sure you read the RFP, is that correct, Solicitor?
Did I read the RFP? Oh, absolutely.
Okay, and during that time, was cultivation included in the RFP?
I can't recall.
I can, and it was. Um, they were not separate. And um, it was a huge mix-up because the rating system that we had only discussed retail. When we were in the planning meetings, I specifically asked if we're going to do a rating system for cultivation and folks said we were just going to focus on our, on uh, retail. And so when we received the application or the RFPs and we had cultivation applications included, I was like, well, how are we going to fairly um, rate these? And we did not discuss um, cultivation, but then I got the pushback that we did discuss cultivation and it was um, in fact in the RFP. So I want to clear that for folks that says that it wasn't in the RFP. What wasn't done um, correctly and appropriately was our rating system for cultivation um, um, applications. And I do believe that the first cult, we got two. The first one was not completed appropriately and the second one could have been completed appropriately. But we didn't have the fair rating system to do it appropriately. So I would also agree with Counselor Williams uh, that we separate the RFP. So we have clear definitions and clear rating systems on any cultivation um, applications that come in. Prior to Counselor Williams going public with cultivation, I was pushing it behind the scenes with the group. Because of the fact that we did have cultivation applications in-house. And I think I spoke to some of the folks that put the application in because they were asking me, because they did submit the application. And so I was pushing it behind the scenes. So I just want to make it clear to folks that cultivation wasn't included, but in the future, if we have the opportunity, that they should be separated, um, separate RFP processes. And then Counselor Gomez, because I do also want, have questions for the organizations, I'll yield until we're able to ask some questions.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, for your comments and uh, clarifying some of the, the information. We have um, Counselor, oh, let me uh, put your hand down, Counselor Whitfield. Uh, we have a member of the committee that wants to speak before I let my member of the committee to speak. Is there any other counselor? Yes, Counselor, President Hurst has his hand raised, I know he hasn't spoken yet. So I'm going to let Counselor Hurst speak. Then if any other counselors has any other questions, please raise your hand. And then I'm going to take the, the question from Mr. uh, Marcus Williams and then from there, I'm going to go. Alright, Counselor. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate it. I wasn't going to say anything, uh, but I, I, I think I'll add a, a few things. Um, one, I've always been a proponent of cultivation being handled separately from retail. Uh, there are a couple of different reasons for that, but I think it should be considered on a rolling basis. Uh, for a lot of the reasons that have already been mentioned, but it's very difficult to do cultivation and takes an inordinate amount of money. And so I think when you're looking at these applications, it's probably going to be far and few between that you find an application that is going to have the resources. Uh, and also the location to be able to operate successfully here in Springfield. And so it would seem to me that it's going to be very easy to weed out the bad ones. And also um, it's going to be very easy to weed out the bad ones and you're going to know when you come across a cultivation facility. That is going to provide uh, everything that we would want to see in a cultivation uh, facility, uh, especially when it comes to jobs. And so there's no reason why we shouldn't handle uh, cultivation uh, separately. Um, and also when you're looking to rate these two facilities, I mean, you're comparing apples to oranges. And so uh, because you're comparing apples to oranges, if you're using the same scoring guide, to me, that doesn't make sense. And when we were originally having our committee, uh, when we had our, our original committee, we, when we um, when we uh, I'm sorry, when we had our meetings. Everything was based around retail uh, and retail facilities. And so nothing that we sent up in terms of recommendations to the administration revolved around um, having uh, a recreational facility being considered. And so I definitely think they need to be separated in future rounds, uh, and I hope that the administration will do so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank, thank you, President Hurst. Um, lastly, um, we're going to hear one last time, well, not one last time, but Mr. Williams, if you have something to add or question? And then we're going to go right into the public and we're going to answer uh, or ask uh, Counselor Walsh's question. Um, so uh, Mr. Williams, you may go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I, I, I just had one comment to make and I will yield to Counselor Walsh because her question was actually one of mine. Um, I just want to say that, you know, from the get-go, um, in regards to the zoning ordinance um, that this body already approved. Um, there was no neighborhood opposition to the concept um, that came before us. And I think that's big, you know, and especially as it relates to Counselor Ramos and myself, who uh, pretty much divided where Eastfield Mall stands. Um, Ward Five and Ward Eight. So, you know, I just want to mention that as well because I think that if this, of course, uh, being a subcommittee hearing open to the public. Uh, that uh, the public should know that no neighborhood opposition to that concept. And I will yield to Counselor Walsh and ask after if that's appropriate.
Alright, so Counselor Walsh's question, um, I'm going to let her ask it again. Counselor Walsh, please ask your question again. And then after we ask that question, I, I'm going, anybody that's here representing any type of business or interest in cultivation or uh, marijuana recreationally. If you want to say something, please raise your hand and I will come to you one at a time. The first person that I can see outside of my colleagues, um, um, I got Tracy Whitfield in the queue and after Brian Shea, I'm Brian Shea. So we're going to go back to um, Counselor Walsh's question. And then from there, we're going to open it up to uh, the rest of the, the, the folks that are here joining us. Counselor, you may ask your question.
I'll be quick, I'll be quick because I know there's a lot of people on this call, but, but basically I'm wondering if, if there are any changes to people who are interested in uh, cultivation in the city of Springfield? Who have been impacted by COVID nineteen or the economic downfall? And if, if now there's a different timeline for them, do things have to be done quickly for them to keep their interest and uh, in the city of Springfield? We, we don't want to lose some of these projects.
Alright, no problem. Thank you, Counselor Walsh, for your question. That question is not necessarily for the, for anybody from the city or counselors, but it's for uh, people that are joining us. So if you do want to answer that question, please put your hand up, we're going to go to Brian Shea as of right now. Mr. Shea, you may, you may begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And to answer Counselor Walsh's question, the, the, the impact can't be ignored. I mean, certainly, there's an economic viability to these projects to begin with. Um, they require a substantial amount of capital investment, they require a substantial amount of effort to put into the, to get them off the ground. Any delay will impact that project moving forward. Um, I represent Old Post Road Development Corporation and we were lucky enough to meet DM Cannabis um, earlier this year. And we discussed the project, which is currently, we hope to propose at the Eastfield Mall. And just to give you the realm of the economic impact that any delay could cause. Uh, I can't speak for the Eastfield Mall, they certainly don't share with me the, their, you know, their viability. But we certainly have all been there and we recognize that the mall isn't what it was twenty years ago, right? So this project at the mall has a significant um, financial impact to its sustainability. And I'm sure that they have a different outlook as far as this goes. Um, but for, for us as potential applicants, we were, again, we were fortunate enough to have this um, partnership with DM Cannabis. Um, DM Cannabis is currently a provisional license holder in the cannabis space. And they hold a cultivation license, which they've been granted by the state of Massachusetts. And they've chosen Springfield as the place that where, where they would like to locate that cultivation license and begin to build out their facility. Um, and, you know, they chose Springfield because of the strong leadership that they find through Mayor Sarno's office. And certainly, the strong leadership that they find amongst all of your colleagues. Um, but as this drags out, I think that your interest in solidifying a cultivation facility at the Eastfield Mall, it has to dwindle. There's a certain period of time where they're going to say, we waited and we've waited long enough and we're going to have to move. And that would be very sad for the city of Springfield. I grew up in Springfield, I was born there. I don't live there anymore, but I certainly remember what Springfield was like. And it's not like it was when I, when I was a child growing up in Springfield, things have changed. This project would be a great change for the city of Springfield. You're talking about a company like DM coming in, investing up to fifty million dollars over the next five years to build out a cultivation facility. At a building that really doesn't have a substantial amount of utility left in its life. It would be a wonderful project to see something go there that would be viable and would create upwards of two hundred jobs. Um, in, in uh, Mr. Bakula's comments, he, he mentioned uh, retail, he mentioned cultivation, he mentioned delivery. DM Cannabis is one of the four, um, one of the largest delivery services in the state of Oregon. They're, they're located in Oregon, they're, they're operating here in Massachusetts. He didn't mention manufacturing, that would be another um, potential um, part of the business that we would hope to someday want to secure at the mall. But cultivation, you know, this is uh, you know, I think that Old Post Road Development would continue on their quest to have a cultivation facility at um. You know, at the, at the Macy's Building in Springfield, but to secure a potential partner and a wonderful candidate like DM Cannabis. I'm not sure that there's many of those left. The cannabis space right now is, is being, you know, somewhat, it, it's growing. And this is the best time that you could possibly imagine to be uh, in, you know, in, in the beginning phases of cannabis in Massachusetts. The longer we wait, the, the, you know, the less viable these projects become. And I don't know if Chris Mitchum, I know he's on the call, if he may want to uh, mention something.
We, we, uh, we will, we will get to the people that have their hand raised in the, in the queue, sir, so I will get back to you. Um, if you're, if you're wrapping, if you can wrap up so I can get to the rest of the questions.
Sure, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, no problem. We're after six o'clock, just letting you guys know, a little bit of a time restraint, we're going to be going a little bit after so we can make up of some of lost time. of lost time. I know that Counselor Whitfield has her hand raised in the queue. After Counselor Whitfield, we have a gentleman called Chris Mitchum. And then after that, my colleagues, Mr. Brown and Mr. Williams are in the queue. So first, Counselor Whitfield, you may ask your question, and then we can move on to Mr. Mitchum. And then after that would be Counselor Brown and Mr. Williams.
I do have a question, but first, I did want to mention that DM Cannabis was one of the top, I want to say, top five that was chosen in the cannabis selection for retail. And I remember Tim Allen and I were the only two that went to their presentation as city councilors. And I remember getting, like, special treatment to ask all the questions that I wanted to. And they were very thorough. The security was thorough. It was really a great presentation. It was also a great application. And I just wanted to say that we would still have to go through a fair selection process. And so that's not to take away from that, but I just wanted to say that I do appreciate you guys sticking in there and hanging around, because I think that you will do great for the city of Springfield if selected. I was very impressed with your security procedures. And now I'm going to get to my question. My first question, and I only have two, Counselor, is I hear this number about 200 and 300 jobs, but in the wake of COVID-19, has that number decreased because you have to, like, spread? Or what is the number that you guys anticipate as far as jobs, though? And Chris?
I think the question would be for the person that's representing DM Cannabis, if they are here.
I think Chris and John and Brian Shea are all.
Okay, so I have Chris in the queue. So, Chris, if you want, you may answer that question, and then lead into after that, after she has done with her second question. Chris, you can go ahead and get into your following, and then we can get into the rest of the questions. Chris?
Yeah, Chris, thank you for your time. We, COVID has definitely had a huge impact on the world. That job estimate still holds true. I think that we're anticipating that vaccines will be available Q4, Q1 timeframe. And by the time we're actually, hopefully, COVID-19.
You're kind of like.
Mr. Mitchum, yeah, we're hearing you kind of going out. If you can kind of talk into the microphone a little bit better. I apologize.
Sorry about that. Is that better?
Yeah, it's a whole lot better. Yes, sir.
Okay, so, yeah, we don't expect COVID to have a major impact on our job estimate for the Eastfield Mall project. We anticipate that a vaccine will be available in Q4, Q1. At this rate, we probably won't be online until Q3, 2021, best-case scenario. And that obviously depends on the host community agreement process.
All right, thank you. Counselor Whitfield, your next question. Go ahead.
Thank you. I got the gist of what you were trying to say. My second question is, is it accurate that post-incarcerated individuals can get jobs in cultivation with, like, a criminal record, or would they have to still have their record sealed? I just want to get the right information out there. And I'm not 100%.
Counselor Gomez, would you like me to answer that?
Honestly, anyone can answer that question that feels that they can answer. If you want to answer that question, sir, you may. I know the answer to it, but if you want, you can answer that question, and then we can move on to your question, and we can keep on working. We are at 6:05.
I'll just answer quickly. You know, our internal policy, we only screen for any violent offenders, but, you know, anyone with a felony on their record that is nonviolent, we're totally open to employment.
Okay, thank you.
Fantastic. So we have Counselor Brown in the queue. Then after Counselor Brown, we have Counselor Williams. I'm going to entertain, we haven't heard from Counselor Edwards. So if anybody would like to yield to hear from Counselor Edwards, we may do so. But right now, we have Counselor Brown and then Counselor Williams. Then after that, we have Mr. Shea again, but before Mr. Shea, because we haven't heard from Mr. Edwards from Ward Three.
I will yield to Counselor Edwards before me.
No problem. Counselor Edwards, you may ask your question first, sir.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate your time. Considering the historic impact of marijuana laws, as anybody, and I keep hearing about jobs, well, obviously minorities have been working in this country since the establishment of this country. Can we have some conversation about who and what the investors and the ownership group looks like that is considering Eastfield Mall, and whether there's any minorities involved? And if this industry is going to move forward within the city of Springfield, are we ever going to get to the point where we're starting to talk about minority ownership as opposed to minorities working and having jobs? Unfortunately, too often, I'm hearing people of color have to ask about how we can get a job. I'd much rather hear a conversation about how we become owners so that we can employ as well and have a seat at the table about the operations of how these businesses are going to work. And whoever would like to answer that, or at least like to comment on, I'd be eager to hear from.
Counselor Edwards, a fantastic question, which will have a fantastic answer, from what I understand, when it comes to these, this company. I think that's a question for Mr. Shea, because if I'm right, Mr. Shea, this actual organization that is teaming up with that other organization that was on the call, it's minority-owned, am I right?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. It's not 100% minority-owned, but it's a majority-minority ownership in Old Post Road Development Corporation.
What is the demographic of, because obviously, we look into and we see that there's different types of licenses when it comes to, you know, impacted areas. And, you know, does that fall in line with, is it only just, has some minority ownership or majority ownership? Or does it have any other demographics that's in check? Like, any veteran, women, anything like that?
And there is a strong presence of women in the ownership composition also, Mr. And the other thing I'd like to point out, too, I know that the jobs are not, you know, they were part of the question, of course, in the dialect from Counselor, from the Counselor. But DM has a very strong, diverse employment policy. And it's something I think that they're probably fairly proud of in what they've done in Worcester at their existing retail establishment. Their goal here, and our goal here, too, which was part of our original conversations when we met with DM, was to ensure that there would be hiring from the local community. And that, of course, would incorporate, you know, a very diverse staff in whatever facility, whether it's cultivation, retail, manufacturing, delivery, any of those things.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. I have a quick question. I wanted to make sure, does that answer your question a little bit, Mr. Edwards from Ward Three?
I appreciate hearing that there is minority investment. That's my only concern and primarily what I'm interested in hearing about, regardless whether it's recreational, the cultivation or delivery, no matter what it is. And I believe the Cannabis Commission has actually started and has had many, many conversations about the inequities of the granting of these licenses across the board and across the Commonwealth. So, yes, that's going forward, that's always going to be my primary concern, is whether or not we're getting a seat at the table and our ability to participate.
Feeling is very mutual. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for that question. Counselor Brown, then Counselor Williams, and then we have Mr. D'Novella, that's after Counselor Williams. Counselor Brown?
Yes, I'm, you know, sometimes it's hard when I deal with Counselor Whitfield, because she's on it, when it talks about criminals and the jobs and things. That's kind of where I'm at also. And I commend my colleague, because I know how she is. But I want to know, Brian and Chris, can you guys put something in writing that we're going to get to jobs and everything? And as far as the criminal stuff, that, can you explain that violent, nonviolent? I don't understand, like, what your hiring policy.
All right. So, let me get, that's a good question. Let me just get to Counselor Williams, because I know we're winding down on time. And then I'll let Mr. Shea and Mr. Mitchum answer that question after Mr. D'Novella. But that's a good question, okay, to just elaborate on their hiring policies. Counselor Williams, you're next.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to, do we have a representative from Eastfield Mall present? Is that someone?
I believe there is somebody here from Eastfield Mall. I heard there was two gentlemen said that they were representatives of Eastfield Mall, yes.
All right. All I ask is, if possible and if appropriate, to get just a little bit of insight of maybe the economic situation and what the benefit potentially could be if a cultivation place was there.
I think it was Mr. Brightenback that was here, Mr. Chuck Brightenback. Did I say that correctly?
Yeah, I'm here.
Mr. Dave Thompson, here's why. I apologize.
Yeah, thanks for asking the question. It's important to us. As you know, malls are, malls like ours are starting to wobble a little bit on the wheels. And we see this as an opportunity to add a non-retail use to the property. It'll create a tremendous amount of jobs, and it's a 24/7 situation. So I think Chris could speak more to the employment situation there, but it's definitely going to breathe some new life into this mall and give us a leg into the redevelopment plans that we want to do there.
Thank you, Chuck. And through the chair, if I may, I will just end with, I don't have any other questions. I will just end with just saying that, you know, if an opportunity like this passes by, I think it will be one of the biggest economic blunders that the city has faced. And I will say, for an administration that myself sometimes have come butted heads with, that I would not want that stain on anyone's record, because it is both preventable, and I think it would be detrimental to the community for the benefits lost. So I just want to put that on the record, that I think this is, the time is now. And for, you know, certainly, Mr. Shea and the city, I would just urge you, please, to seek a common sense kind of solution, because I think it's clear of the opportunity and the fact that everyone deserves an opportunity to pursue cultivation that chose to do so. So, again, that's, I'll just leave it right there.
Thank you. So what I'm going to do is, we have Mr. John, the Novella, I want to say like it's a Novella. D'Novella. So, John, you're going to go, and then I'm going to, we're going to go back to Mr. Shea, or if not, because Mr. Shea, you have spoken twice. I'm going to go back to Chris, and I'm going to go to Counselor Whitfield to wrap it up. And I'm going to have a closing statement, because we are going to go over at past quarter. And if we have to hold another subcommittee to talking about this conversation, I'm willing to do so. I don't think that we're going to object to that. But, John, you may go, you may ask your question, or speak, or answer anything that you feel that you have to answer at the moment. And can you please just explain who you are and who you're representing, and, you know, so the readers, or the listeners, not the readers, the listeners at home can understand exactly who you are. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor Gomez. My name is John D'Novella. I'm the general manager for DM Cannabis. I was DM's first budtender that they ended up hiring back in Oregon when we launched in 2017. And I've been living here in Massachusetts, working on our expansion plans for the better part of about two years now. And I can say to multiple diversity points that when we worked on our recruiting plan and our diversity plan for our retail location in Worcester, we set a target of 50%. We thought that it was in line with the demographics of the community, according to our research, and we wanted to achieve a diverse workforce at 50%. I'm very pleased to present to you today that we achieved 75% diversity with our workforce here in Worcester. And I feel like these people around me are more than just employees. These are my brothers and sisters. And the fact that we're all employed in an economic system right now that is on the brink is something that we all take very seriously. And we're not going to blow this opportunity, and we're going to absolutely follow all the rules and regulations to the best of our abilities. To answer the question about the violence regulations and with our hiring practices, the suitability regulations and the CMR regulations prohibit us from hiring people or any persons that has a felony on their record, with the exception of a nonviolent marijuana offense. So, given the legacy war on drugs and the detrimental impact that that has had on communities of color, we absolutely are not, we welcome people that have been convicted wrongly for the conviction of this plant, of possessing this plant. So that's something that we take very seriously socially. And then to speak to the ownership, I was the first employee to gain equity in the company. And I can speak on behalf of the owners that originally invested in DM, that if you show up to work on time and you work hard, there is absolutely an opportunity to gain equity in this company. We have an equity incentive plan that's currently in place in our operating agreement. And I know that that's our intention from day one, to reward the people that give it their all in this business, a piece of equity ownership in our company. I really hope that helps. I know that was a long rant, but thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chris Mitchum, and then after that, we'll hear from Counselor, I mean, I think he's, yes, Counselor Shea, Brian Shea, and then Counselor Whitfield.
I'll just be short. Thank you all so much for the opportunity and for the time. I feel like, you know, I'm a former athlete, so I kind of put things in the context of athletics sometimes. But I'm like, I'm on the sidelines, you're the coach. I just want you to put me in the game. And, you know, we just need your permission to start. Once we get that permission, we're ready. We're serious. As Counselor Whitfield mentioned, we've been around Springfield for a long time. We've been fighting to get a license for a long time. We're not going anywhere in this city. We believe in this city. We just, we're looking for a shot. And if you give us that shot, we promise we will not let you down.
All right, thank you. Counselor Attorney Shea, I think you were next, and then we'll hear from Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. I just don't want this thought to be lost. I understand that there's a process. I understand the RFP. I certainly responded to the last one that was sent out on behalf of another entity. But I just want it to be known that DM Cannabis possesses a provisional license from the state of Massachusetts. They've gone through the screening process from another municipality. They want to relocate that here to Springfield. That process is not cumbersome. It can be done rather quickly. All they need from Springfield is a host community. They don't necessarily have to go through the RFP or RFQ process. The city could find, if they could find it within their discretion, to grant a host community agreement. DM could start tomorrow. And I get a sense of urgency amongst the other council members. And this could potentially, you know, curb some of your anxiousness that you're feeling about the timing of this and the delay from COVID and all the other things that we could just pile on. DM gets their host community agreement, they could start their build-out tomorrow. You're cutting months and months and months off of that, you know, that program where people would start working, and they would start being a large contributor to the revenue in the city of Springfield, and their build-out, the investment there. I mean, this would be an extreme shortcut if it was possible for the city of Springfield to entertain that concept, sidestep the RFP process, recognize that they're already a license holder, and they simply want to relocate here within the city. And that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. I just want to be transparent that they could not start tomorrow. The city of Springfield or the company would have to come to the city council. And outside of the host community agreement, they would need a special permit. So, the process would still be long-winded. I understand the urgency that you are arguing. No problem. Just for the sake of people that are home, to gain access to doing this kind of business, outside of a host community agreement, you have to come to the city council, which is the other side of the coin, to receive a special permit to the city council. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, people at home kind of understand that. Tracy Whitfield, Counselor Tracy Whitfield, you are next. And then from there, I will hear closing arguments from members of the committee, of the committee. And we will, if we have to host another meeting in the next two weeks, I will do so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to give my final comments on how I agree with Counselor Williams. There was an opportunity for us to have a cultivation. There was an opportunity for us to have a cultivation license delivered. And I want to say that the committee dropped the ball and I'm part of that. So I will take ownership and responsibility, even though in a questioning, I was part of the committee. There was a license, I mean, there was an application that was submitted and we dropped the ball. And that's not fair to folks that are looking to get these licenses to bring revenue to the community, to create jobs for the community, to invest in the community and even have part ownership or grow like John did in ownership for, in the company. And so I just want to make sure that we don't miss this opportunity again because maybe Eastfield Mall went another route or maybe DM just got fed up and said, we're going to go to another community. I just don't think that we should miss this opportunity again because the first opportunity was lost and I cannot blame the applicant for that loss. So I wanted to go on record saying that. And maybe the mayor will take the conversation and talk about a host community agreement so that we can get this ball rolling. And maybe, this solicitor, you can deliver that message to the mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Closing remarks from my colleagues and I will close with myself. So we have members of the committee, President Justin Hurst and also Marcus Williams. Any closing thoughts? Seeing none. Okay.
I'm sorry. I was waiting for Councilor, President Hurst to make remarks. I will say that, you know, I think maybe one of the motions we can, Mr. Chairman, that we can file is to draft, if you will, I don't want to say a final letter because we don't know how long this process will take. But I think it would be incumbent of this subcommittee to draft one last letter with support from the council, again urging cultivation to take precedence or if not precedence, then to come out amongst a mixture of other applications. I think it would be incumbent of the subcommittee having our colleagues and governments, local government sign on to that, sends another message.
All right, is that, is that a motion?
I'd like to make that motion, yes.
All right, for the sake of transparency, because we are virtually meeting, I'm going to take a roll call. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
It has to be a member of the committee, Councilor Williams.
Exactly. I'm sorry.
I appreciate your second. So we have a second from the other. All right. Councilor Marcus Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilor Justin Hurst?
Yes.
All right, I vote yes. So that is a motion to put together a letter stipulated that we are encouraging the administration. And if any of my other colleagues outside of the, the, the subcommittee wants to sign on to that letter, we'll send that letter around after, in tomorrow, so that we can send it to the administration and get everybody on the record to support cultivation in the city of Springfield. So Councilor Justin Hurst, you may have your closing thoughts as a member of this committee. And then I will go on my closing thoughts and we will close up this meeting for today. And if we have to meet again, I will schedule another meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to highlight for the listeners at home, as well as for those on the call, that this is not solely about per DM. I know we have them here this evening, but you know, I would welcome any cultivators to be a part of any future meetings that you hold. Because I think, you know, the more applicants that we have, the better decisions that we can make and the more beneficial they will be to the city of Springfield. In addition, I just want to remind my colleagues, we don't have to wait on the mayor to issue special permits. And so to the extent that folks are dragging their feet, and I think I might have mentioned to this to you, Mr. Chair, at one point in time, we can start hearing applications for a special permit if we so choose. And I think especially when it comes to cultivation, if we're really serious about our intentions, then that might be what we need to start thinking about doing. And then the ball will fall in the lap of the mayor. So I certainly would defer to you, Mr. Chair. But I just want counselors to know that that is absolutely an option. That's something I mentioned when, when I gave my remarks, when I was sworn in as president. And I just want to make sure that counselors know that that is still on the table. And in the event that the mayor and the administration continues to drag their feet, I think we certainly should consider exercising that option. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. You took a little, took a little bit of my thunder, but absolutely. I want to first to say and thank you all of the representatives that came from the community to hear today's meeting. I know that during this pandemic, it's been very, very hard for us to come together as community and have these important discussions, specifically when it comes to the economic development of the city of Springfield, understanding that there is a downward spiral when it comes to, you know, jobs and businesses that are closing down. And respectfully, you know, I want to thank all of my colleagues that joined us today and they were part of this important conversation. I want to thank the administration, Mr. Tim Sheehan, Mr. Ed Pacula, for joining us, giving us a brief update of where we're at with the administration, specifically when it comes to this cannabis and recreational licenses. And what we have heard is hopefully by this September, that we will see some kind of progress. I am, and I am going to amplify the fact that yes, the city council has the ability to be able to hear and issue special permits, specific to this and specifically to this specific site. But also I want to encourage everyone that is a person of color, a person that wants to get involved with this business, that not to shy away and to know that Springfield has brighter days ahead of itself. And that here in the city of Springfield, that we welcome not only the creation of black and brown jobs, but black and brown ownership. And that's the whole importance of why we created these, these special subcommittees. And some of us are chairing them and we speak upon the issues that be because we want to make sure that, one, Springfield people come first, Springfield ownership, and not only women, veterans, and also minority ownership. It is not a secret that I've been upfront and forward on the fact that in my life, that I was, I was involved with, being, being a part of the criminal justice system when it came to marijuana. I was one of those kids at 17 years old that caught, got caught with marijuana. And that moving forward was charged as a, with a mandatory minimum as a, as a child, as a 17-year-old kid. And not everybody gets a second chance and not nobody and everybody thinks that they're ever going to be a city council member. So that's why I believe that this type of business, regardless of, of its criticism, that could, and I've said this time and time again, as much I love the job creation that came from the casino and knowingly what the pandemic has showed us and has tried us in these troubling times, is that cannabis and the recreational use of it and the medicinal use of it, which I'm very interested in looking into, what the administration has talked about, reviewing our ordinances. And I've talked about this with our other committee member that couldn't have joined us, Mr. Michael Fettin, about we have to revisit the medicinal ordinance as well. But moving forward, that feel confident Springfield, feel confident anybody that's out there that's waiting for the opportunity to be a part of this business, that we are working diligently and cooperatively with the administration to make sure that we succeed and we're successful. Because like I said before, the casino balanced our budget. But I believe, and I strongly believe, that with the pockets of money and the things that we created with, with our colleagues from Councilor Justin Hurst and Jesse Letterman and also Councilor Edwards of these impact funds, that once these places start to get going, that there's going to be pockets of money for the community to be able to reinvest in our community. And that's what we want to do. We want to make sure that these revenues get in touch the impacted areas where so justly, so many, so unjustly, people were arrested at alarming rates. It is not a secret that Hammond County is one of the most arrested counties in the, in the city, in the state of Massachusetts. And that's why it's important for a cultivation center of this magnitude because outside of CRCC and Casino, the, before we had those two great developments that came to the city of Springfield, we had the Eastfield Mall. And then the Eastfield Mall is on a cusp of doing a redevelopment of housing. And, and, and once I seen that the movie theater closed down, I knew that we had to have this meeting right away because without having the movie theater, without having some of those flagship stores that were there, they're now leaving, it really puts us in a bad place. And I really want to make sure that the city of Springfield is successful. With that being said, I want to thank everybody else for joining us. If you ever want to reach out to any of us, all of our emails are on the city's website. And please, please join us next time. Thank you. This is Adam Gomez signing off. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion moved.
Any second? So moved. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.